I will call this meeting to order. The Willetts City Council will call it a special meeting and, uh... If you know what, Bethany, why don't you, uh, lead us through the pledge? And then we'll have a roll call.
Okay. A pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America
And I bow to America.
And to the republic which stands one nation God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Connie.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Strong.
Present.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Perfect.
So, at this point, I'll read this. Please take notice due to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order in 2520, which suspends certain requirements for the Brown Act and the order of the Health Officer of the County Mendocino to shelter in place to minimize the spread of COVID-19. The city council members will be participating by teleconference in a special meeting of April 9th, 2020. And how to attend the council meeting will be on our attachment here. And I guess let's bring this to item two. And should I ask if there's any members of the public on here?
No, there's no public comment except for on your items.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item two, adopt a resolution accepting the construction completion of the Blosser Drainage Project, project number 2018-01PW008, and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. And I'm assuming that Greta is bringing this to us?
Yes. Yes, um, but we completed the project for Blosser Drainage, um, project and, um, and, you know, the project entailed, uh, undergrounding the drainage through the ditches on Blosser Lane. Um, and the project went well. We had about $2,000 worth of change orders on a $156,000 project, and we were pleased with the result. Um, it's complete now, so we'd like to, um, file the notice of completion and release retention to, um, the contractor after 30 days.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Otherwise, I'll see if Greta wants to say anything or...
No, I don't have anything else.
All right, Greta, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Who's that?
No comment.
Madge?
No comment.
Larry?
No comment.
Hey, and the only thing I'm gonna say on my side before I open it up to the public is that, uh, wow, this is great. Only $2,000 for a public works project like this. So I'm really happy. At this point, I'll open it up to the, uh, public. If anybody from the public would like to speak to this? Okay, hearing none, I bring it back up to us. At this point, I will be looking for a resolution. A motion...
End it action, please, from Larry.
And, uh...
Madge, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I want to call to the, uh, roll call vote.
Yes, councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. All right. And now, I guess we're on item three.
Okay, and then this is just a little bit of an update on what the city has been up to since the, um, the COVID-19 crisis. Um, we continue to be working very closely with our county, state, and federal partners. Um, I'm on conference calls, uh, pretty much all day, every day, um, just sort of keeping abreast of things as news rolls out. Um, there've been a great number of financial stimulus packages and discussions about those coming out. Um, and I think, uh, I think our biggest worry is that, um, those financial stimulus is not, uh, coming into the smaller rural cities but are sort of grouping into the larger cities, into the larger counties and urban areas. And so I know our representatives and I have been really clamoring to make sure that those dollars, um, get to the people who it's and get to our government and get to all the people here that need them as well. Because I am concerned that we are being, um, disproportionately affected in certain ways, uh, by some of the actions being taken. Um, you know, one of the issues that concerned me, uh, the sales tax deferment, um, while I think it's a great idea for small businesses and we want small businesses to be able to succeed and anything we can do to support our small business community is very important. Um, however, this particular sales tax deferment was done with no backfill to, um, the agencies that were sort of expecting revenue. And, um, as a small city, we are disproportionately reliant upon sales tax. So, um, this announcement was not... The governor didn't bring in the league of cities to discuss this, nor did he bring in any cities. He just sort of threw that out there and it pretty much sent your city manager to the hospital. Um, so, um, you know, I've been working since COVID-19 started to try to figure out, you know, City Wiltz is operating on a significant deficit, and we've been working within that figuring out strategies. And so I was figuring out new strategies for, okay, so let's say we lose a significant portion of sales tax. And I didn't know whether this new measure would pretty much wipe all of the sales tax for a year, of which if that were to happen, um, I'm not sure that we could survive. Um, but I think that there are, there is talk about certain backfill of certain kinds. I think that June and I have been talking with our bond counsel and bond representatives and consultants to figure out strategies for some short-term liquidity so we could do some internal borrowing and refinancing of our bonds and figure out a way to go forward. And I'm actually pretty confident we're gonna be able to do that. Um, but it's, this is really, really a stressful time for small cities financially. It's just like it is for small businesses. This is a pretty terrifying time. Um, we are tracking our costs for future reimbursement. Um, I am not as concerned with costs as I am about revenue loss. I am hopeful that CARES Act 4 brings payments for small cities. I know that Senator Maguire is working really hard to fight for the state dollars. Um, there is a, I talked a little bit about, um, evictions. I know we had spoken about evictions two weeks ago, and we were sort of waiting to see what the state or the county would do. And I misprinted, it's actually the, uh, the, uh, Governor Newsom actually announced a moratorium on residential evictions. And, um, so that sort of left commercial evictions up in the air. However, just a few days ago, uh, the California State put out, the court system put out a rules of court that put a moratorium on all evictions, including commercial evictions, uh, for at least 90 days and possibly more because courts have pretty much closed its doors to a lot of nonessential things. So evictions are available for, uh, health and safety violations, but not for anything else, for both residential and commercial, um, which I think is really good for the commercial business community and possibly here in Wiltz. The other thing that the court is doing is, however, they have a, um, they have zeroed out their bail requirements. So when somebody's arrested and they want to get out on bail, that is no longer, uh, only for certain serious felonies and misdemeanors and a handful of other crimes is bail available. So there are more, um, folks out on the street that normally may be in jail. And that is something we need to watch. I know that many cities in this area, in Mendocino County and surrounding counties are reporting increases in violent crime. Uh, we are lucky to report that we are not experiencing that. We are experiencing some more disputes, familial disputes and some petty stuff. But in terms of violent crime, according to our chief, uh, it looks like so far we're staying stable and the police are maintaining a good visibility within the community. Um, the last item I wanted to talk about is, I did mention briefly, because we're in the financial straits that we're in, I wanted June to look at some limited furloughs for senior staff and whether that could help us. And what I asked her to look at is, um, if we were to let everybody have, everybody who's not an emergency worker, which is, um, anybody who's not in the sewer, wastewater, uh, I'm sorry, water, wastewater, public works, or police. If we would all take our second, we normally get one Friday off a pay period instead of taking two Fridays off per pay period. So every Friday would come off. That's a 10% decrease in salaries for these employees. And, um, we wanted to see what that would look like. June calculated that's about $4,500 savings per pay period. Um, we talked about that at our finance committee meeting, which convened earlier this week. And the finance committee asked some more questions regarding, you know, did this hit general fund? Did it hit, uh, enterprise funds? And it is true, this $4,500 savings is actually, um, not much general fund savings. Uh, probably less than half of general fund. Um, and on top of that, employees, all employees, uh, receiving that would be subject to, uh, they would be able to apply for unemployment for the period of time that they were unemployed. And so that would result in they would probably get back 40% of that day. We are self-insured for unemployment, therefore, we would just pay them unemployment. And so the savings goes down even more. So the finance committee reported out, wanted to report out that they think that their recommendation was to wait another 30 days and, um, to see what other programs were gonna be out there and maybe local governments wouldn't. By that time, hopefully, local governments will not have been overlooked as they have been, uh, in the past couple weeks. And, um, we'll just kind of see how it goes for 30 days. And that is, um, a few things I was gonna put in my email tomorrow, but I might as well just tell you now. Um, in terms of workload, the sewer department reports that people have been better about flushing rags and they were very happy about that. They wanted people to keep that up and the, um...
Not flushing them.
Yes, yes, keep that up. Yes, they're being good. It's, they're, they're fishing less rags out of the system, so that's really good. The, um, the message is getting out there and we appreciate that. Um, the other teams are, the teams are also taking advantage of there being less traffic. So they're going into the manholes and they're dealing with INI, which is infiltration. Uh, uh, basically, when, when water comes into the, into our sewer pipes from the outside and, and Monday, it's the sewer stream and it overflows our system, suggesting us to find the penalties. So they're, they're working on INI issues. And our public works crews, you've probably seen, they've been working on potholing all around, also taking advantage of, of the lessening in traffic. So everybody's been hard at work. And that's all I have to report, and I'm open for questions.
So, um, I'll start off with Sabrina.
Okay. Uh, Stephanie, in terms of homelessness, I know that you've sent us some memos about that and I've heard quite a bit from, uh, the public about homelessness. And then, uh, they serve on the MTA board and we've been aggressively addressing it on our end. Do you have anything to update us?
Um, yes, I mean, so there's been a lot of talk about homelessness. Um, the main issue is in, is in Ukiah, frankly. Uh, Ukiah has experienced an incredible increase in homelessness. Their homeless camp on Airport Boulevard was about 15 people. Now it's more like 75 people. Um, I have seen some folks around town that I don't recognize. Normally I do. Um, so I think we've had a slight uptick, but, but it hasn't, uh, been reported as a, as an issue. We had one encampment, they tried to put it up in an encampment, um, over near the hospital and in our park. We took it down, we are allowed to do that, and they didn't come back. So that's good. Um, I know that there are food programs providing food, uh, and support services. Uh, we also have our washroom and our bathroom available for folks who are experiencing homelessness, which is good. Um, the food in the park program has, since our parks are closed, has moved to the City Hall parking lot on Saturdays, um, sort of encouraging people to use the hand washing stations. Um, there is a program, and I'm trying to, you know, put that out there and our police have put it out there, and the county does have some money. So if we see that individuals experiencing homelessness, that they're, who look vulnerable, who may be over 65, who look that they, like they're experiencing some health issues, go ahead and give the county a call because they have money to house people in hotel rooms for, on the short term. And they will also, uh, ask, make sure that folks get tested. Um, the county has also done some, um, and this is a new program with some people, um, experiencing homelessness. They've been able to go out and test the homeless community who do not show symptoms. And, um, the previous directive was that any time you tested somebody, they had to be quarantined until you got results. And that resulted in someone being quarantined for two weeks. And, and nobody wanted to do that. People kind of didn't want to get tested because they didn't want to get quarantined for two weeks. Now the program is for people experiencing homelessness. You can get tested, you don't have to be quarantined as long as you don't, uh, experience symptoms. And so far, the tests have shown no positive results, which is great. So they're both getting folks tested and also getting good results. Um, as for the movement of encampments, um, the directive is still not to move encampments. And, and so that's sort of where we stand, but we are watching the situation so far. And Willetts, we seem to be doing really well.
Wonderful, thank you. Jerry, would it be appropriate just to add, uh, what MTA is doing in terms of homelessness, or do you want me to wait till reports?
You know what, if it's just regarding that, then go ahead.
Sure. So I just wanted to share that the, um, Mendocino County, uh, had made the request that Mendocino Transit Authority canceled, um, our transportation services that went to the south, um, anything to the airport of Sanoma County because we were seeing influx in homeless people coming here and gathering at the Ukiah Campment. And then earlier this week, on Monday, the Fort Bragg City Council, um, the police chief over there, the city manager reached out and asked that we also cancel our services between, uh, Fort Bragg and Willetts, which is, um, bus route number 65, uh, to help also with, uh, homeless moving about, hoping to kind of keep people in place. So I just wanted to share that.
Oh, great, that's good. Thank you. Greta, do you have anything?
I don't have anything. And may I also just suggest that anybody who isn't speaking, put their phone on mute. The soundback noise is pretty bad on my end.
Thank you. All right, Madge?
Um, should I add a couple of, um, things that were interesting to hear from Senator Maguire's Town Hall last night? Or will someone else be doing that?
Now, we can talk about that later. Let's move on. I want to get through this.
Okay, I have nothing else.
All right. Larry?
No.
All right. And then, uh, again, uh, Madge and me were both on the finance committee when we met. And at this point, I think we wanted to give it a couple days, like Stephanie said, just to see what's out there. There's rumors of a, uh, another stimulus package coming, so... And then at that point, we'll have a better idea of reassess. I just, I personally didn't feel like the amount of savings after we add in the, uh, the, uh, unemployment that we pay out would, would cut it enough. But we need to look at everything down the road. Okay.
Um, one thing I wanted to add is I had a really very productive discussion with somebody in the state tax office today. And this woman is actually in charge of, of sales tax collections. And she gave me a better understanding of the sales tax, um, deferment program. And her feeling, and it actually, I think, is gonna calm maybe some local governments down, although I think it's gonna be maybe a little bit harder for small businesses to realize and help. Um, what it is, it is not a deferment for 12 months, as in you don't have to pay your taxes for 12 months. What it is, is more of a refinancing program where you have to sign up for the program and then you have to estimate the tax due. And then you have to pay your first month's payment and then your, you must pay 12 equal payments to make that up. And then in the second quarter, you have to go through the same thing. So you will be paying your taxes every month and there's no balloon payment. So this is, you know, it's gonna be tricky. And if you don't keep up your payments, then you're gonna be subject to, um, penalties and an 8% interest rate, which is significant. Um, and her feeling was that not everyone was gonna take advantage of that. Um, I thought it was just, uh, don't pay your tax for 12 months. And it's not that at all. It's actually, uh, it's tougher. And, um, so it's a, it's a whole different kind of animal. Also, my concern is we have some, uh, if you have a national chain in your city, uh, within our city, it is considered a, uh, a national chain may be considered a small business because their business within the city limits may be under $5 million. However, if their business in California is over $5 million, that actually makes them ineligible. So to the extent that we have any national chains or California chains here in Willetts, they will not be eligible for that program. And that's all I have to report on that.
At this point, I'll put it out to anybody from the public that would like to comment or ask anything without any other agreement. Okay, hearing silence. I will move on to item four. Discussion possible action to accept recognized grant funds from CalOEF, the Public Safety Policy Headoffs, PSPS, the Reliability Allocation as Revenue in the amount of $149,000 and appropriate the fund. So will this be a Dusty or Jim thing?
This is Dusty. I'm happy to present this to the council. Uh, good evening, mayor, council members. Um, this is, uh, I think, funds that the council may recall staff alerting them to the fact that we, that we were successful in getting $149,000, uh, from the state as part of this one-time fund of money that became available during the previous PSPS event. Uh, and the money's gonna be used to upgrade the solar, um, system here at City Hall. And so what we're, uh, the request in front of you tonight is simply to, uh, recognize, uh, the grant funds, accept those funds, and then find a place in the budget for them. And, uh, and that information's captured there under the fiscal impact section of the agenda summary. Um, no, you cannot take the money and put it in the general fund to pay for your insurance bills. Um, the next step for us is going to be to go ahead and design a system and then get the project out to bid, uh, should it please the council. So, um, that's, that's about where we're at with that one.
Okay, at this point, uh, Greta, do you have any questions?
Just a comment. I wanted to say thank you, Dusty and Jim, if you worked on this as well. This is just a great thing. I think that being able to run, uh, City Hall and the community center via solar power during a PSPS is a great idea and appreciate your work in there.
Thank you. I'll, I'll pass the good news on to Jim if he's not on the line. Thank you.
I think I heard him earlier. Um, Greta, do you have it? No, actually, that was Greta, so Sabrina.
Greta said it well, thank you.
Okay. Madge, do you have any comment?
The same thing that Greta said.
All right. Larry?
No.
All right. Anybody from the public? Okay, hearing none, and, uh, I just want to say again, thank you for Jim and Dusty. And, you know, I know we can't do all the solar we want, but this is, uh, stepped in the right direction. So at this point, I will call for a motion. Does someone would like to make one to accept?
I would like to make the motion to approve this at staff recommendation.
All right. Madge, make the motion. Do I have a second?
Sabrina?
I have a second, so any further discussion? Hearing none, and, uh, back to the public, comment on this already?
We did it already.
All right, you did, thank you. Um, then at this point, roll call vote?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. All right. So at this point, discussion, uh, discussion and possible action on resolution adopting the North Coast Resource Partnership Phase Four.
Yes, uh, this is Andrea Trincato, project manager. And, um, Jim Robbins worked with me on this. Um, and he's, he's on the line, uh, for, um, detailed specifics, questions about the plan. Uh, we were facing a, uh, a deadline to adopt this and, um, the deadline is, uh, is, I believe, on the 22nd, 20th or 22nd, um, and submit it for our funding for the groundwater, uh, project. So, um, as you know, the groundwater, um, project funding, the Proposition One funding, has come with, uh, a fair amount of requirements. This is one of them. Um, the Department of Water Resources, uh, manages Prop One funding and they've developed this integrated regional water management program. And as part of that program, that's, that's a statewide program, um, that, uh, basically looks at regional areas and, um, and the North Coast Plan is our plan, um, for our area, our region. Um, its goal is to, um, to, it's, it's basically a planning document to look at, uh, at, uh, resource management within our region. And, um, and, let's see. Uh, we've adopted prior plans, um, and previously agreed to be a part of the IRWM by signing a memorandum of understanding. Uh, we did that, um, about a decade ago and that was for the water, uh, treatment plant upgrades, um, which also involved, um, uh, this type of funding. And, um, so basically, we have already committed to, um, being a part of this plan and this program. And this is the most recent version of, of the plan. Um, the plan is non-binding. Uh, it doesn't commit the city to spending any money and it gives, uh, local autonomy to, to address the, the plan's goals and implement them in the way that we see best fit for our area. And, um, with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions. And if I can't, um, if I don't have the information to, to address the question, I'll, I'll, um, ask Jim to step in. Any questions?
Sorry, uh, Greta, do you have any questions?
I do not.
All right. Sabrina, do you have any questions or comments?
No, it's all very clear. Thank you, Andrea.
All right, Madge, do you have any questions?
No, no, thank you.
All right. And Larry, do you have any questions?
I, uh, Andrea and Jim answered my questions today and I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right. And I just want to say, it was a lot of information and I'm glad you kind of put it in perspective, Andrea, that as far as not binding this any one thing. But I guess it looks like best practices and that's what we should be doing. So, uh, thank you guys for the work in getting this done. At this point, I'm gonna see if the public would like to ask any questions since we have Andrea and Jim here. All right? I'll bring it back up here and I will be looking for a motion to accept this plan.
Recommended action, hurry, please.
All right. Do I have a second? To Larry's motion?
Sabrina, yes.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. All right. You know, I know it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to give every council member a chance to speak on, on, uh, anything that's out there that they want to talk about, if we could keep it brief. So first, Greta, do you have anything you'd like to update us on?
Um, not really. I guess, uh, wanted to let everyone on the council know that, um, both Councilwoman Rodriguez and myself have been very active on social media. I think, uh, putting out good information regarding, um, the economic help that's available to our small business owners, our landlords, our employees in our town. I think we've also been, uh, holding the line well on encouraging people to, uh, continue the shelter in place order and following that, uh, just trying to stay positive and keep people calm. And, um, that's what we've been doing day in and day out. And I think the council is doing a good job.
All right. Sabrina, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I'm really proud of our community for finding creative ways to shop local. I think now more than ever, people are thinking about shopping local, not shopping on Amazon or big retail. What do we have right here despite the shelter in place? There are ways still to, uh, conduct business and, uh, and follow the order. And in doing that, also encouraging businesses to please pay your sales tax and pay it on time because we do know that, uh, that those funds are critical for providing, uh, the city services. So just reminding the public of that, um, on a regular basis. And then also I just want to, I shared on my Facebook page, uh, today and the other day, and I've got a pretty overwhelming response. Um, so just sharing with the fact that earlier this week, the governor, um, uh, did put another order in place to support childcare for essential workers. And then last night at midnight, the, was the deadline for the Department of Education and Department of Social Services to come up with a plan of how that was going to work, um, in terms of, um, we know that all essential employees qualify, but what would be kind of the, the order of who would be served first? How would they be served? Where's the funding coming from? Uh, how much money would that be? I'm still waiting on the details for all of that. But I put it out to the public that we know that the funding's going to come through North Coast Opportunities, uh, rural communities, childcare in Ukiah. And they're encouraging people to go online, print their normal application, and either submit it by email or send it by mail. And that way, when the funding does come through, which we're expecting that, that announcement shortly, uh, they'll be in line to be able to, um, to find childcare. They can give you a referral from your community of who's still open, as well as, uh, get you qualified your service open. Again, the governor said that those childcare services would be free. There wouldn't be any, uh, criteria that was linked to, um, the amount of money that you're making. So just wanted to share that.
Johnson, Sabrina, and Madge, is there anything, may I mention McGuire's call?
Yeah, um, I don't know how many of our residents and our council members were able to attend the, um, the town hall, uh, audio only that was last night, but it was very, very well organized and had a lot of really good information, uh, including the public health officers from both Mendocino and Lake County and the two CEOs and the two chairs of the board supervisors and a statewide expert and, um, medical expert from UCLA. So it had a lot of really, um, you know, high-powered and very succinctly presented information. Um, and they are looking at, I think the, uh, today's Willet's Weekly has a little bit of that information. But, um, they're looking at a potential peak being towards the end of May, I think. And then they're talking about any opening up of the shelter in place happening kind of, um, in steps, not all at once, everything's open, but, um, making sure that people continue, especially the social distancing. Um, and in the meantime, they are really strongly recommending people use facial coverings, but at this point it's not a requirement. Um, and the good news also is that, um, there's still only been four cases in Mendocino County. Three of those have completely recovered and one is very close to being completely recovered from, uh, from their illness. And there have been three cases in Lake County and all three of those were not community spread. Um, so, so far, um, we are, we don't have a contagion going, but that means we really have to keep our guard up and really observe all the shelter in place, um, cautions because that's what will keep us safe. If we're really lucky, we won't have a huge impact on our health here. It is having a big impact on our economy, of course. Um, I, I do have some interesting things that happened at the Sonoma Clean Power meeting because I did attend that, um, by Zoom. But I think for, uh, the two things that sort of affect us, one is that Sonoma Clean Power made a $15,000 contribution to the community foundation here in Mendocino County and a somewhat larger one to the Sonoma Food Bank. And the other thing that was kind of interesting is that they say that there's eight to 12% less energy being used in their whole, um, area, the whole region that they serve. And most, that includes both residential and commercial. So most of the reduction in energy use is because of commercial establishments, uh, being closed. So it was all, uh, very interesting. And I think that's, uh, all that is immediate here.
Well, I, thank you. That was a good summation of, uh, McGuire Town Hall. I was on there too and, or listening too, so. Uh, Larry?
Yes, I'd like to thank Greta for her synopsis of the meeting with, uh, McGuire. Uh, and, uh, I got ahold of it. And, um, I thank you, Greta, very much and for that and all of the people that are working the, the internet. I appreciate that and keeping the news going. And I think it's really nice that the businesses are open up and are delivering things. Uh, I think that's a great asset to our community. Thank you very much, and that's it.
All right. I communicated with Stephanie and some of you that, um, I've been on the phone with, uh, Representative Wood and Senator McGuire. In fact, I believe, um, Senator McGuire's hosting some people, government officials and, uh, I think for mayors, city managers and, uh, and, uh, chamber reps or directors, and that's going to be tomorrow. I'll be on that tomorrow. But, uh, I guess my shout, and again, Stephanie, you've been, uh, it seems like you've been on top of things, looking at things, so I appreciate that. So a shout out for Stephanie. And then kind of a shout out for our public safety folks, our fire and police locally and all the folks working at the hospital. I mean, they're, they're prepping for something that I hope doesn't hit us. But, uh, and Jason Weld, I got to tell you, that guy's got the Energizer Bunny energy out there. He's rallying the troops. And so again, I'm hoping we're prepping for war that we don't have to fight. So, um, at this point, let me know if the public would like to say anything. I'm going to, uh, convene into closed session and we'll be signing off of this. And if there's something to report, we would come back out and report. Um, all right?
How, how are you going to do that report out, just in case it happens?
Um, if we have something to report out, I guess Kathy and me will call back in.
Correct.
Hey, I have a question. Is there a separate access code for the closed session portion?
Yeah. You, you could have got an email with your, uh, as part of the email for the, uh, for this meeting. You should, it should be in the body of her email, Kathy's email.
If not, is there a way to call Kathy to get that, just in case?
Yes, you can call me at my office number.
Oh, I, I see it there at the bottom. Kathy, I found it.
Thank you.
I've got it.
Larry, do you have it?
I'm okay.
All right. So, so we just, uh, we're going to reconvene, uh, just like in a minute?
Yes, we're going to hang up and then call back. Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.